Fine solo, Andrew.
All right. Thank you, everybody, and welcome to the Wednesday, July tenth, meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance Amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners, the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings, work sessions, and public comment is allowed on those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. My name is Derek Day, and I am this season's Chair of Thurston County Planning Commission. I reside in District One, and we'll go ahead and continue our introductions in the boardroom with Commissioner Casino.
I'm Eric Casino. I've served at large, and I live in the Lacey UGA.
Kevin Pastor here, District Five, he him.
Sandy Kaiser. I live in beautiful District Three.
Bill Fishburne, District Four.
I'm Daniel Bum Barker. You see him pronouns, and I live and are in and represent District One.
Thank you. For the record, those were six-minute popsicles, not four-minute popsicles. All right. Moving on. So I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda for tonight. Second. All right. Any discussion on the agenda? We will note that the staff has made attempts to give us a shorter meeting tonight at our request from last meeting. Um, all right. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? All right. Our agenda is approved for tonight. Next up, we'll move along to approval of our meeting minutes from our June twenty-sixth meeting. Entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
No move.
All right. Any discussion on the minutes? Three seconds. That two. Yes.
Second.
Thank you for the second. All right. Now, moving on to any discussion on the meeting minutes. Right. Hearing nothing. All in favor of approving our minutes for the twenty-sixth? Any opposed?
It's been okay. Sorry, does that require abstention? We only have five votes.
I don't. I think we were short our forum.
I think that for approval of minutes, our rules of procedure allow for only two members who were present on meeting approvals to be able to qualify for approval.
Parliamentarian passengers. All right. So that that we have approved our meeting minutes for the twenty-sixth. And next, on our agenda, we are moving on to public communications. It's like we've got some folks in the boardroom tonight. Do we have the list? Is there anybody who wants to speak with a sentence? All right. So we'll go over some general speaking guidelines. First, we ask that you would introduce yourself, including your address and where you reside in the county. We ask that folks would address the Planning Commission and not the audience or staff. The Planning Commission is not necessarily obliged to respond to public comments, but we may choose to if we've got time or some questions. Speakers are limited to three minutes. We'll have the timer that will show on the video screens to help keep track of time. We can't donate our time to another speaker. Please refrain from comments that are lewd and offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. And please know comments that are commercial in nature, and all materials provided to the county may be subject to release pursuant to the Public Records Act. And remarks on projects that have already had a public hearing are not permitted. So thank you for your cooperation. We're going to start here in the boardroom, and then we'll go to folks online. If you're online and you'd like to make a comment, go ahead and raise your hand, and we'll get to you after we go through the boardroom. But we will start here in the boardroom with Mr. Pettit.
Good evening. My name is John Pettit. I live in ninety-seven. Yeah, in East Olympia. The actual topic that I'm going to talk about a little bit is something that we're going to hear a little bit more from staff, I believe, bringing up some ideas, but permit review process, annual update. The reason I'm talking about that is people call me constantly seeking a little help to get through the permit review process. It's it's very difficult, okay, for the civilians to get through it. The staff has challenges because people walk in and everyone wants to think, you know everything about my property, when they know nothing about the property, like the environmental aspects or anything else. Because of the issues on this particular topic, which include the element of, I think this last year, we had a little report that the backlog was only four thousand five hundred and ten backlog permit applications, which were regarding permitting review process, and the state has a guideline that, and that was for like two and three years. I just got a subdivision approved that was only out there for ten years. Not entirely the fault of the county, but but we have to do better. So I would probably say, let's listen to see what's being recommended. But if I was going to make another recommendation, it's just like you have a planning commission here, and you're not going to be an expert on the review process, so of what it's like to go through the office over here. But you know, there are certain people that have a constant process of going through there, whether it's the master builders, whether it's trying to gather a group of people together that maybe they have to go after all the time. They have to understand how to approach different topics. Because those are the people that know how to overcome the issues. And so I can't ask you guys to overcome issues. I I'd like to have it like it used to be in the old days. You walk in, you give them a napkin with a drawing on it. Boom, you got your permit. Doesn't work that way anymore. Now now you have to have engineering and everything else involved. You have to have environmental studies. You have to have all these things. It's overwhelming for the private sector. When it's overwhelming, it automatically becomes you're bad. But I know that the county actually intends on wanting to help protect our environment, wants to have people be safe. That's what the permitting process is all about. But we're going to have to find some ways to help speed, create a faster process for people to do something. Because even a few months' worth of delay, think what the interest rate impact is on a project. It can be increasing cost by thousand dollar per month at the end result. So I'm going to recommend that whatever you hear tonight, emphasize that maybe we need to look at getting another little private subcommittee put together for making recommendations also to the commissioners, how we can improve the CPAD department and how they can serve the people.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. All right. Next up, we have Mary Ann Tompkins.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mary Ann Tompkins, and I reside at one zero zero four Seventy-third Avenue, Northeastern Olympia. I want to talk a little bit about our rural lands and housing. I was, at one point in my life, low income. I was below poverty level, actually. During that period of my life, I lived rural with a friend. It lasted about two months, and it was two very long months. I didn't have a reliable car. I did not have enough money for gas. I was stuck. I needed to live in walking distance of a bus line and necessities like job, groceries, doctors. I'm telling you from experience, my experience, as a person who who lived in poverty, that poor people aren't going to move ten to fifteen miles away from services, bus lines, stores, or jobs. It's unrealistic to expect low income to live rural unless you don't want farms or forests. I I'm doing great now, by the way. This was a period of my life. I've heard the use of current topic buzzwords to pitch further development of our rural lands, and it's they go like affordable housing, equity, diversity, and BIPOC. And that is called diversity washing. It's a real thing. Rural development isn't going to fix any of those societal issues. What could help is increasing housing density by building up in our urban core, having housing that's not just at market level, market rate, incentivizing repurposing of derelict buildings, et cetera. There's other there's other solutions and build in our urban core. The bottom line is we really need to protect our local farms. We need to protect our forests. We need our rural lands protected because they they work to keep us healthy. And that's why the Growth Management Act was created. Please don't redefine the GMA. Please put clear policies in place before allowing any of these UGA swaps that I the swaps are a choice. They're not a requirement for the county. Thurston really needs to be focusing policy implementation of the Sustainable Thurston and the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan for current and future planning and development. Thank you for your time, and thanks for your service.
Thank you. Next on our list, we have Rhonda Larson Kramer.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Rhonda Larson Kramer, and I live at eighteen fourteen East Side Street and near downtown Olympia, but I have twenty acres of forest land outside the urban growth area. Wanted to recommend putting policies in place so that UGA swaps in our county conform to our local values. I propose the following policies. First, the county should implement new policies that track the requirements of the twenty twenty-two UGA swap law. There are two swap laws, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four. They're in different RCWs, and they're similar but not identical. There are two main components of the twenty twenty-two law. First, a swap cannot happen unless there is a showing that the UGA is bursting at the seams in the area where the swap in parcel is. The wording of the statute is that there must be a showing that the existing development, quote, exceeds available developable lands, unquote, in the area of the UGA where the swapping is proposed to occur. So the policy should address that a swap isn't allowed if that area of the UGA is underdeveloped. The second component of the twenty twenty-two UGA swap law is that a swap cannot increase development pressure on rural or natural resource lands. This is somewhat ambiguous, but let's say that county commissioners have an interest in extending services to rural residents. So they look at a swap proposal and say, this looks like a good idea because it will allow us to extend services to rural residents. But a swap that results in extending services into rural areas is just another way of urbanizing rural areas. So that would be by definition increasing development pressure on surrounding rural or natural resource lands, and that violates the swap law. So the policy should clarify that a swap in our county can't be done for the purpose of extending services to rural residents. Now I'd like to talk about the twenty twenty-four swap law. Under that law, the swap cannot result in a net increase in development capacity of the UGA. For example, if the swap out parcels are already non-buildable, they are already protected from development and will remain so whether they're in the UGA or out of it. So a swap with these types of parcels is going to cause a net increase in development capacity because the swapped in parcels are now going to be able to, or I'm sorry, yeah, the parcel swapped in will now be able to be developed and urbanized when they were outside the UGA before and couldn't be urbanized. So this violates the twenty twenty-four swap law, and the county's policy should say so clearly. And the twenty twenty-four swap law also says that a swap cannot result in a net increase in critical aquifer recharge areas in the UGA. Thurston County is all critical aquifer recharge. There's just level one, which is really protected, and level three, which is least protected. To carry out the swap law properly, the county should develop policies that state that the swap cannot result in a net decrease in critical aquifer recharge area protections.
Thank you. Next on our list, we have Chad Kramer.
Hello, my name is Chad Kramer. I live in Olympia, but my wife and I own this Wally Ash family farm next to the proposed UGA swap of Barholz. I watched the commission meeting on the twenty-sixth, and I was taken aback by the statements by Kevin Ramsey from Burke Consulting. Although although he may not have meant it, the message that his talk seemed to convey was that the Growth Management Act requires housing for low-income people to increase in rural areas, for example, cluster housing or additional ADUs. The this gave the impression that these were ways for the county to circumvent the Growth Management Act by putting in large ADUs. Sizing was discussed. The GMA does not require rural land to absorb low-income house. There's no exclusion going on. People are self-selecting where to live based on the cost of living, including the cost of transportation. Building cluster, affordable housing, and mobile home parks in rural areas does nothing but isolate low-income people from services and increase their cost of living. Low-income housing needs to be in urban centers because it's not fair to low-income people to have to use gas money and time to drive for far-to-work services. Putting housing in rural areas also increases infrastructure costs, goes against the Climate Mitigation Plan, goes against the GMA's anti-sprout policies, and reduces the livability of the county as a whole. We want to help low-income people build wealth, and putting higher transportation costs on them is doing the opposite. There are no high employee farms. There are no high employee farms out there. The rural employees are employers are casinos and schools. Put the housing for those workers where they will be near services, Rochester, Grand Mountain. Yeah. Focus on focus county resources on helping these towns build housing for rural workers. Recently, I was at the Tumwater Fourth of July Parade and observed the latest houses housing being built. The buildings I saw were no more than four stories tall. Made it very clear that cities need to change their code to allow taller buildings to increase housing inventory. An increase in height restrictions to add just one more floor would have increased these by twenty percent in units. I know that this is not the county's role to fix the housing problem. However, there are tools and incentives the county can use to help build denser, build up, not out. Thank you.
Thank you. You do get extra points for coordinated testimony. All right. Next up, we have Tom Crawford.
Good evening. My name is Tom Crawford. I live at one zero zero one six Lookout Drive Northwest in rural Thurston County. It's an Olympia address, but it's rural Thurston County. It's in the Cardiyan Beach area. I'm also a board member of the nonprofit Thurston Climate Action Team. And we recently passed a resolution endorsing many of the points that previously made. And so I'd like to reach you. I'd like to talk a little bit about why we pass this resolution and then read you the exact language that we support. We obviously support the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, as I've said previously to you all, and we think that it's in order to successfully meet the goals of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, we as a county need to think very carefully about what we develop, when we develop it, wherever we develop. And I completely agree that we need to really focus our development work in urban areas and prioritize density. Having people, having homes spread out throughout the county simply increases transportation, which is an intensive form, which produces pretty intense greenhouse gas emissions, which is causing our climate crisis. So with that said, I'll just read you the statement. UTA swaps allowed by laws passed in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four must result in no net loss of rural or natural resource lands, no net increase in development capacity, and no net loss in protections for critical aquifer recharge areas. It is not enough to say there will be no net increase in total UGA acreage. Write a policy. We're asking the county, in this case, to write a policy that prevents urbanization of our rural and natural resource lands and of our highest priority, critical aquifer recharge areas. We must not create new mini-cities in rural areas by misusing the new tool, UGA swaps. So again, that represents the consensus, unanimous consensus of the Thurston Climate Action Team Board, and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Tom. All right. And it looks like the next public comment is Betsy Norton.
My name is Betsy Norton. I live at fourteen oh five Evergreen Park Drive Southwest of Olympia in a multifamily unit, just so that you know, in the city. And I have no private outdoor area, so I'm just letting you know when you're thinking about land use planning. Please consider those of us who live in an urban environment who need access to public parks, and we need access to greenways and, you know. So it shouldn't be when you're thinking about the UGA, this idea that it should be well, the well development. Please reconsider that and make sure that we reserve space for for those of us so we can get up there. What I'd like to to mention in addition to that is when you're thinking about changing the permit process, I would request, I would support extending the permit review, the SEPA particularly, the review period from thirty to sixty days at least, because it's very difficult for people to first of all track that they're coming through, know when they're ready, and then to analyze all the technical information. The other thing I would request, if you are improving that process, is that the county do an initial assessment of SEPA, SEPA checklists, and have somebody actually go visit the property and correct them before you do your analysis to make sure that they actually reflect what's on the ground. What we have seen in the past is that that's not necessarily an accurate reflection of things. And then lastly, I would just ask you, when you're doing land use decisions, please consider a habitat overlay for the county when you're thinking about this. I was on a call last night, and I saw people in their backyards looking at a herd of elk, bears, coyotes. They had mountain lions, and they had bobcats just off the back. They're on the edge of Capitol Forest. And I know myself, when I go to Panera on the west side, you can sit outside and look up the microwave power, and there's osprey nest in there. And if you go down to the Olympia Farmer's Market, you can look at the DFW, the little cubs of furries by by DFW, and there is a heron right there. So please consider, we are living with animals and wildlife, and they mean our sport. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And nobody else in the boardroom? Okay, we'll move online. And Tasha will promote folks who want to speak to a speaker role.
Lynn first.
Lynn first. And just a note for those, for if there are others online who want to speak, go ahead and raise your hand on Zoom.
Hi, my name is Lynn Fitzhugh, and I live on Eleventh Avenue Southeast in Olympia. And I'm here today to ask the commissioners to familiarize themselves with this new UGA swap law, which has been mentioned by previous speakers. I think we're all familiar with the fact that the UGA laws in general are there to protect our rural lands, to make sure that development happens within agreed-upon boundaries. The these two laws that were passed, the second one was passed because the first one was pretty vague, and it was an attempt to clarify. I don't know that we've actually gotten clearer. I think now we have two things to be confused by. But it was not intended to apply to all counties. I don't think it applies to our county. It talks about in cases where the county is bursting its UGA boundaries. That's when it's supposed to apply. Thurston County is not bursting its UGA boundaries. So this is why I ask you to try to familiarize yourselves with it. I know Commerce has not yet given you direction about it, and yet we already have a developer happily trotting forward telling you, oh, I've got a great project that I I want to do, and this UGA swap law is going to allow me to do it. And so let us not get the cart before the horse. Let's really understand this law. We've already had people testify to you before that this would be illegal if applied in this way in Thurston County. Our county, as you know, is losing farmland at a frightening level, and our county commissioners have just voted various things to try to protect our rural forests. So yeah, please just take a close look at the UGA swap law and understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. We'll go to Phyllis next. All right. There you go, Phyllis. If you're ready, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. There you go.
All right. Good. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
All right. Yes. My name is Phyllis Farrell. I live in unincorporated Thurston County in the Sunwood Lakes neighborhood, although I'm speaking from Lake Shalane, where it's very hot. But anyway, I also wanted to speak briefly about the UGA policy language that we are contemplating. I'll be mercifully brief. In our twenty forty-five surveys, Thurston County residents indicated a strong desire to protect the rural character of the county and agriculture land and forest land. When developing the UGA policy language, I would encourage you to support or prioritize supporting environmental and ecological conservation and net gain and not UGA swaps just for development purposes. In other words, not just acreage for acreage, but the environmental services provided or lost in the proposed swap. Thank you for your service, and I'll let you do.
Thank you, Phyllis, for your mercifully short testimony. All right. Next up, we will move to Howard. All right. You can go ahead and unmute yourself whenever you're ready.
Good. I'm unmuted. Okay. As for some reason, I can't change my name, my picture, but anyway, you can hear me.
Loud and clear.
Okay. My name is Howard Glassditter. I live at eleven eleven zero. That's one 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 zero Coleman Road Southeast on the Nusqually Delta. My PC came close to being hacked a few days ago, so I'm struggling to keep things organized, having a difficult time. But I don't know if we will be discussing Thurston County two forty-five tonight, or we will be discussing anything about the Nusqually Subarea Plan that hasn't been updated for more than thirty years. But I'm just making a comment just in case and for future reference, if it can be considered. I've submitted similar public comments on both of these issues in writing for the twenty forty-five and the Subarea Plan. My concern is that there is an effort to convert Nusqually farmland from agriculture to aquaculture. My comments are on record and can be easily read in four or five minutes. I think if they, I think they should be considered. The Subarea Plan was written in a very balanced way to be as in a very balanced way to be as win-win as possible in converting from agriculture to aquaculture lumps everything to the advantage of a single entity. Whereas now several people are evenly balanced. The farmers and large landowners sold their land about thirty years ago for a pittance. And these these people are being shortchanged if if that happens. So I think I'd I'd think more aquaculture could be done, but not not the whole mess. So that that's my comment. I don't know if you're getting into it tonight or not. But for future reference, I have a written comment. It can probably be read in about five minutes on on both of these subjects. The subarea plan is slightly more elaborate because that's what's, that's what this is all about. Anyway, that's what I have to say, and thank you for allowing me to say it.
Thank you for your comment, Howard. All right. With that, I think we're done with the public comment. And we will move along to our new business, which is a work session. Number one, we don't get those that often anymore on the permit review process process annual updates.
Need one second to find the right screen.
I love to keep things fresh. Now, call planning is going to be there.
Share the screen. And PDFs, I'm not used to this. Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Brahms, community planning. Tonight, we will be talking about the permit review process annual update. And so this is a relatively new docket item that many of you have not seen, but hopefully have heard of at our docket updates. But this permit review process annual update is something that we have a lot more flexibility now to kind of look at what we're doing in the county and kind of see what we can do better and make those changes more rapidly than having to wait a full cycle. And so during today's work session, I will provide just an overview of what this project means. Some of the topics that we are thinking about, but then obviously touching base with all of you to talk about what other ideas we should consider. And then kind of an overview of next steps for the project. So as I said, this is a relatively new docket item. This was added to the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five Development Code docket. And it was a lower ranking project, but there are quite a few that are just set in stone. So we are now getting to this, and there are quite a few projects that are kind of pressing. And so this project is a placeholder for issues and consistencies or redundancies and CPES application review process. It is ultimately meant to provide reliable and consistent service to the public by addressing those issues more rapidly. And it is a reoccurring item. So as we identify things, we can go ahead and respond to those more rapidly. At this point, we are thinking more of an annual, but it does give us more flexibility. And so how this presentation will kind of work is, right now, we have three overarching topics. I will kind of give you an overview of some of the issues as well as some of the possibilities of addressing those issues. And then kind of open it up to the planning commission to provide some insight on any other issues they see happening in CPED. And so the first one will be docket. And so docket is a very interesting task. It happens once a year. And what we're starting to see is that a lot of the decisions that go into docketing happen before we talk about how much money we have. And so we can over commit and then not have the ability to follow through in a more timely manner that's consistent for the applicant. There's also a lack of information for our community and decision makers and the access to the application. The application right now is it's minimal. And so it kind of leaves a lot of holes, and we're hoping that maybe we can review that and maybe fill those. And with that, make it more transparent for the public. And so there's a lot of options. Every county has to create a docket. And so it's kind of like looking to see what works best for everyone. And so some of those could, some of those changes could be just updating our requirements for application review materials, making it more clear as to what they need to provide, more detail in their overall application and so on. We're also thinking about looking at the timing, because obviously if we're making decisions on what we're working on before we know how much money we have, it doesn't always work out. And so looking at that, see if we can improve that in some capacity. And then another big one is the pre-application. And that is a critical one that I think we're really missing out on, because we can identify a lot of issues or bumps that they may face before they even go ahead and submit and get kind of vested in the process. And so what I think everyone will do is just kind of stop here, kind of open it up for questions, ideas, and go from there.
I was curious about pre-application. Would it be like an informal conversation with a planner? Would it be, what what is that?
So currently with preapplications, it is a, it's a formal process. They submit an application with a proposal. And that is then routed to numerous divisions and departments in Thurston County. And so ideally, how we would potentially imagine it is we'd bring in our partners at Public Works, Public Health, our permitting staff, and kind of just get together and talk about what do we see as potential issues? Kind of provide that to the applicant and give them the opportunity to think about how they could address that before they even get started with the application process.
So it's not a real live kind of interactive thing?
Oh, no, it it is. It basically, it's a, it's very common, like for larger proposals, like development proposals that you would come in, get to talk to staff, try to figure out, like, is this the best pathway you need? And so if you think about like a site-specific rezone application, maybe the property owner is just trying to achieve like the establishment of a business. And there's another pathway, I think, going through a lengthy one to two-year rezone process.
Like a pre-submitting meeting?
Yep, a a pre-submitting meeting, pre-application, something like that. I'm sorry?
Is it pre-submitting or pre-pre-submitting?
Oh. Well, it's, it's, they wouldn't, the expectation wouldn't be that they have a full baked development application. It's really an opportunity to get early feedback from multiple departments, including us. Like, we don't, we're not able, or we don't have a mechanism in long-range planning to offer a lot of feedback or have a conversation, an informed conversation with applicants wanting to go through some of these site-specific rezones. And so it's something that I'm very familiar with doing in other jurisdictions I've worked in. And I was surprised that we don't really take advantage of that here. And as we started looking at other counties, Andrew did an awesome job of, he started this off by like, what do other counties do? How does it differ? And I would say the majority of the ones we looked at require a pre-application.
Yeah, we were the only county that didn't have that option available. And what would kind of come out of this is a way to identify potential issues that stop you from investing too hard into your project. Because once you're in the process and you find out you need to complete X or Y, that could come with thousands of dollars of cost, that could just potentially kill the project. But if you'd known that ahead of time, you wouldn't have put all that effort in and kind of establishing more realistic expectations at the get-go. Because right now, anyone can submit an application the day before, the day of the application. We we never know about it until we get that notification. And sometimes it works out perfectly, but other times it could have a lot of issues that could have been ironed out had we had that initial conversation.
And and for their knowledge, how long is the application packet that they have to submit?
Two pages.
And what kind of supporting materials are currently required?
Map and drawings? Very similar. A map of the site and an aerial, and I think, I don't even think they have to provide a boundary of which the rezoning could take place.
So if you think about this big decision being made by our Board of County Commissioners and asking for feedback from our public, in a lot of cases, all they have is a two-page document with an attached map. And all we have is a two-page document with an attached map for the board to make a decision about whether to invest a lot of staff resources in a particular project. And so this might just be a way, especially looking at other counties and what the expectations that they set around docketing are.
Are you guys thinking that that you'll be offering this as, not as a requirement, but maybe if the project's big enough, it would be a requirement? Like, I I know when I went to build a house in Pierce County before I did that, I sent one guy in Pierce County an email, and he sent it around to every other department in the county. And three days later, I got back a call page document that said, this is what you need for each of these departments within our county. And that was a super helpful thing. I'd love to see something like that here in Thurston County. And maybe that makes a lot of sense for somebody like me that's building a single family home. But if our holdings comes in, it's going to be a whole lot bigger packet than my single family home on a single lot in a neighborhood. So is there going to be a threshold where this is going to be at? And is it going to be something that is paid for by the applicant?
Those are all great questions. And I think that's kind of what this conversation opens is, do we want this to be optional? Do we want this to be required? Are there thresholds? Is there fees associated with it? Things like that.
Yeah, I think we're we're open to receive. Like, at this point, we've done research into what other counties have done. We think there are opportunities to make improvements, especially as we think about centering engagement and transparency, transparency and clarity for the community and the board, who has to make this decision in a pretty tight timeframe. But beyond that, like, we would, if if you all agree that this is an area that could do some updates and be included in this annual package, we would be bringing a lot of options before you.
You said that earlier, there were basically the only county that doesn't offer this as an option. But one of the possible issues, possible solutions is to require a pre-application. How many of our other counties, to your knowledge, require pre-application? And is it conditional? Or is it, is it universal?
I did a review of six, six counties, kind of all over the place, north, south, and adjacent. And three of them did require it, and three of them had it as an optional. We were the only one that doesn't really have, we can meet, but it's really hard to get that coordination with those other departments and divisions to join in. So when it's built into code, it's a little more of a nudge to join us.
And it was like, two of them require a fee and the rest of them are free. It's like a service.
It almost feels like this needs to be tiered according to non-complexity, where, like Commissioner Casino was suggesting, over a certain threshold would require the application, or perhaps just a more comprehensive application packet. Right? This might not be a one-size-fits-all situation.
Then it could be optional for somebody who found it helpful.
Yeah.
And I think it makes a lot of sense. And it almost sounds more, really more like technical assistance. And maybe talking about it that way, instead of talking about it as like an application, that it's actually like we're providing technical assistance on permitting requirements. That'd be a way for people to feel like it's less of a risk.
I don't know how this would play in, but like in that example I was telling you that I went through, at the end of my twelve pages, there was basically a statement in there that said, if you do all this, we're going to give you your permit. Now, it wasn't like a ironclad. It wasn't an ironclad guarantee, but it was about the closest thing that they could give to it, because they obviously couldn't verify everything that I said in there. But it was, it was, it didn't put a shot clock on them, but it almost did. And there is already kind of a, a shot clock on, on issuing permits anyways. From the time somebody submits a complete application, you're supposed to get a permit within a hundred and twenty days. We know that's not a terribly enforced thing. It'd be great if it was, but, you know, the real world doesn't always work as fast as we'd like.
And but these are, I will like preface, these are like the most complex planning applications that can be submitted, and they're all legislative. They all go through a legislative review process. So different from a single family home, these are your call plan map amendments, your UGA changes, your rezones. And I would say, even when we think it's simple, like the POG, POG rezone, on the face of it, was probably one of the simpler ones, and it was still, what, four or five work sessions with the planning commission? And significant outreach to surrounding property owners and the, so even on the face of it, when it's simple or small, small and acreage, it's really hard to suss out.
And I think what it does is it also gives us the ability to do kind of the, an initial review that we would normally do for the application, so that we can identify any potential environmental concerns, transportation concerns, anything under the sun, and provide that to them preemptively, so that they can make an informed decision before they move forward or may decide that, oh, there's an alternative by going this route, because we actually had the conversation. And there is this path that is a much faster and more guaranteed path than necessarily going for a site-specific reason.
Yeah, I'd like to see something in there, because there there, we hear stories all the time where somebody has gone through and they're getting ready to pull their permit, and then next thing you know, BDC says, oh, well, we forgot about this, we need to look at this. Or, oh, this came up, so we need to look at this. So if if there's some way that we can give people that come into the BDC and a roadmap that actually will get them to to the light at the end of the tunnel, that would be fantastic. So we don't see any of these ten years to pull a permit kind of things.
Wow, that's the other, at the end part.
Curiosity. Even if we don't necessarily require them paying for pre-application, this this route, the application process, I imagine that it would, in the end, save a significant amount of staff time. And so that that saved staff time probably makes up for the difference of a loss in maybe application fees, or folks would just never get to that process, right? But I'm imagining your time is not entirely covered by application fees.
Ours isn't, but our BDC is. And so those are, those are nuances that we would have to work out. So technically, like, our long-range planning staff can provide technical assistance without it being tied specifically to a permit, but our other folks might not be able to as easily.
I don't think anybody would complain if developers carried their own weight. So if they came in and wanted you to do two days' worth of research, you, they paid you two days for your research, as long as it doesn't turn into a profit center where you charge them for two days' worth of research that you did thirty minutes on. And I'm not, I don't want to accuse anybody of doing that, but as long as it's diligent, I don't think, and I don't want to subsidize other people that want to build. They could pay their own rate.
Yeah, and these really, these are the applicant-initiated comprehensive plan amendments.
Also, just break the application fee up. To do the pre-application is a certain percentage of the total application fee. So if they end their process there, it was compensated, and then that time-saving later, it works out.
And the way the development services be scheduled is currently set, it is set by acreage. Like, so there's already, there's already some kind of framework to say if it's under a certain acreage, it's this amount. If it's over a certain acreage, it's that amount, with an assumption that the bigger it is, the more complex it is. So I think tonight, we're really looking at a thumbs up on whether this is an appropriate, an appropriate process to sort of put in the permit review process update.
I I really like that you're giving us an opportunity to have input on this. But quite honestly, I'm not even sure why we're given that.
I know, because it's titled too.
Yeah.
But I also think it's really important to give the planning commission feedback.
I think it's great that you're asking us for it, but.
Well, because it is going to probably go to a package to the board, like with stuff that you are going to be giving formal recommendations on.
This isn't compliance stuff.
So this piece may be a little outside of the purview, but then the other pieces that are all going to be packaged together, so the CPED and or the appeal, those are all specific to Title twenty through twenty-three. And so there there may be times where the thing may not fall within the wheelhouse, but we'll still give the opportunity to know.
And and while we're also, this might touch Title twenty as you start talking about application types and requirements, because as part of docketing, there's only, there's only three application types that wind up on the docket. And so clarifying this middle requirements, that might leak into Title twenty.
The submission requirement would be in Title twenty for the docket.
Okay, yeah, so it's going to be a blend, but, I mean, as as you've probably seen, we're treating planning commissions' role in the docket a little differently, maybe than in the process, and trying to keep you apprised and also welcoming your feedback, since it's it's your work plan, so.
I think that's great. I think that's great. Appreciate it.
I have a lot of questions.
We might have all the answers yet.
Starting off with what you just said about, these are only applicant-initiated comp plan changes, there's only three types that end up on the docket. Uh, here's reference to some different types. What are the types? How many types are there? Is there only three? Or there's only three that make it on the docket?
It's, well, it's the legislative. So it's UGA, any UGA changes, which, if at some point you would like a little bit more feedback about where those policies live, they don't necessarily live with the county in our code. Their countywide planning policies, but the local decisions live within the county. So UGA changes, um, comprehensive plan map amendments, or policy amendments, like the plan update. Um, and rezones. There are applicant-initiated development code amendments, um, which are a little intrigued, like their own.
They're wonky.
Yes. But I think ultimately those ones become, they get wrapped into a lot of other, like, work that's already going on. So like the cannabis code, that was one that, although it was requested initially by an applicant, really, the planning commission helped shape that, staff helped shape that before it got placed on there.
When you looked at other counties, six other counties and their processes, did you happen to notice whether they also only had two-page applications or different?
Some were quite extensive, uh, others were very slim. Um, it depended on the county, depended on the the size, it really, the size did play a role in that. So it kind of varied, but the more planning-focused counties, um, their applications were long and very extensive, and a lot of the review prior to the application is even being submitted, happened at this kind of initial stage before it's even
So when they went into the docket process, they were accompanied by staff reports. Whereas when we only have two pages to review with a map, we can't really provide much feedback. So, not necessarily recommendations, but they were accompanied by staff reports.
Well, thank you. Um, Mr. Pettit referred to a potential backlog of four thousand five hundred and ten. Um, can you confirm what is the number of backlog permits, and then also how many do we receive per year?
So those are going to be like our land use building permits. I don't have the number off the top of my head because they don't touch our group. Um, I will
That's not part of these four categories?
No, those are like your subdivisions, your site plan reviews, partitions, or short plots. Um, building permits that have a land use component, critical area reviews. That we will be touching on that at the end of the presentation, um. Yes, and there is a, there is a constant backlog. Um, we don't have enough staff to review the number of permits that get submitted.
So
I can confirm that.
Yeah, so that's my question still, is of those four types of applications, what is the backlog and what is the amount received per year?
That's our docket.
Yeah.
So all of those, if they've been docketed, we have staff assigned.
But everything that is received gets docketed?
It it's decided on by the board, and so ultimately if they decided, so give you like a timeline, actually have one for me. Uh, in twenty nineteen, we received or had a total of fifty-two projects. Uh, twenty-five were officially docketed and twenty-seven were on the preliminary. That same year, we only completed two. Uh, kind of jumping to twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, we had a thirty-six total, uh, with twenty-seven on the official docket. And in twenty twenty-two, we completed six, twenty twenty-three, we completed ten. So we're, we have a pretty good track record right now. And so this is a means to kind of improve upon that and make sure that applications, when they come through, have the smoothest, may not be the most popular, but smoothest way through the process.
I would say the way we approached the current docket with the board was, we outlined what our existing staff resources were. We even had like a bar chart. So as they placed things on the docket, we moved, we moved up the bar chart, and they did not exceed staff resources. In past years, to Andrew's point, it's like, here's the list of projects, here's your projects, here's your staff. And there was a disconnect, which is one of the reasons we started talking about, can we align this with the budget conversation so that you know, we were ba, we're going and doing our docket, or having our docket conversation with the board right after they've already completed their budget. If we were to go before and they were like, you know what, we really want to do this many projects, well, then we could also come to them during the budget with like, okay, that's great, we are going to need some additional resources to complete those within the timeframe. So it might not always be necessary, I would say, with, over the next two years, you know, we should have enough staff resources to complete everything.
How many proposals don't make it on the preliminary? They get eighty-six altogether.
We had a few, like Beaver Creek was one that didn't even make it on preliminary.
Um, the Port of Tacoma didn't make it on the preliminary as well.
Up Castle didn't.
Up Castle didn't, Duskins, which is in Grand Mound, was added to the preliminary. And then there's the fireworks, which is not really us, as well as um, shootings.
The shootings, um, so.
Um, and another thing that we kind of did from the past to now is, in the past, they would docket very minor, minor changes. Sometimes they're only a quarter of the page long. But that just added to the list of projects, and so what we did are kind of create these buckets. And so the new uses related standards, code clarifications and corrections, and this permitting thing, so we can actually take a lot of those minor things that kind of muddied up the the list of projects and kind of make one concise effort once a year to kind of clean those up.
So, so this isn't intended to solve all permit process concerns. It's really, we had a few that had already been identified, like the super review process that was referenced, that one had already been identified. There is another one relating to appeals that had already been identified, the docket one has. Um, so these were ones where like, well, maybe this is kind of the first batch. And then next year, we're gonna have a different batch, you know, um, but it's not intended to solve all of the problems. It, that scope is too big, and some of these really will deserve to be on their own pathway because it's not just some procedural changes, there are substantive ones. Um, but yeah, where we can try to consolidate and you know, only have one hearing with the planning commission instead of four different hearings on four different projects, um, we'll try to do that.
That's helpful. I really appreciate the timeline and so. It's going now further down that same direction, hearing a lot of forest stories about ten years or more. Um, what do you know to be the average time to approval by type?
By the ones covered in the docket?
Yes.
Some of those can be ten plus years because they've been on the preliminary docket. Which really means that no staff resources are being assigned.
Um, I also would say, compared to like twenty nineteen to now, uh, projects have a greater turnaround time. It's really hard to necessarily compare to the past because some projects, um, by forces unknown, delayed it many, many years, and it's just something that we couldn't really control. It's just
Incredible increases in in terms of approval of so many permits and completion of projects. Um, so a hundred and twenty days reference that shot clock. It's not for any of these types.
Yeah.
There's not a shot clock on these other than basically they're allowed to be, have a chance at getting docketed once per year.
The only requirement is that it only one adoption can happen a year.
And they have to reapply if they don't make it that year?
No, it's more or less, if the project is voted down, that is when they will need to uh, reapply. But ultimately, if they don't complete, let's say in twenty twenty-four, it will roll over until it's completed. Only at the time of the reassessing of the docket will the board have the opportunity to completely remove it or place it kind of on hold on the preliminary docket for as long as they deem necessary.
But no more docketing fees are collected.
Correct. Docking fee is only once, um, at the time of submission, and then the application fee is only accepted when the project begins its review.
My last question is, uh, do you have any sense, are there projects that gotten held up for a long time that are projects we just absolutely want, and they gotta help them up for bizarre reasons, like you kind of alluded to, or there were some legitimate reason why I think that it's okay that we take our time to think about some things, like I heard of some property in the ground area that was being considered for conversion into a park or conversion into something else, and it takes some time to think through some of those conversion decisions.
I can't think of anyone, any specifically, it could, I know in the past, there were different commissioners, different planning commissioners, and they had different opinions on projects, and some felt that it shouldn't happen. Um, others felt that it needed to happen now, kind of thing, and so it really just depends, it's it's a wave, and sometimes it can happen really quickly, and other times there's just these lulls. And so right now, I think we're in a good point where we're actually seeing some movement, um, we want to keep maximizing.
I'm glad you clarified that. I was thinking about the county commissioners making some of those decisions, but you're sounding like it's planning commissioners made a lot.
And this is over the course of twenty years. I can speak to things that preexisted me, but, um, I heard.
Thank you.
Anything else on docketing? I I do have one on the appeals portion that you guys are exploring. Do you want to move on?
Do we have a a thumbs up on whether that should be something that
Yeah, the details, obviously, yeah, I know we're out, but it sounds like it's worthwhile.
I think you all are on track with that.
While I totally support, uh, additional info and recommendations, um, I would love to see some sort of you, you said, you look at six other counties and there's a big variety in how they do it. But you then referenced planning-oriented counties, and they do it this way. So let's look for best practices very.
And so what the plan is, more or less, this is just an initial assessment. When we actually have more concrete stuff, that's when we'll have the memos where there's comparisons, the details, kind of where we're coming from with what we choose uh, to bring, uh, before all of you. Moving on to appeals, uh, this one's pretty straightforward. Currently, the code, uh, has the Board of County Commissioners as the appeal review body, which essentially means if you apply for something, and the uh, the BDC for like, let's just say, a building permit, uh, or one that goes, uh, to the hearing examiner. Ultimately, the board can never speak to you about this project because they are the final decision-maker on the appeal. And so what this would address is more or less shifting the appeal to Superior Court. It's a pretty common, uh, approach so that the elected officials have the opportunity to speak with their uh, constituents regarding any of the permits they have in their system. That's pretty much.
And this is one that has been, um, requested by the board.
So what can the board do when they talk to the app, like, what's the role of the board if the board is no longer the final decision-maker?
Cause my question is well with this.
So what, what is like an applicant gain from being able to talk to their commissioner about, uh?
Commissioners can then talk to the BDC.
Okay. I figured that's
Not necessarily to
So, I I guess, I understand why the board doesn't want to do it. Because they don't want to be the bad guy on anything. And it's my understanding that even if the boards, the way it is now, even if the board said no today, that applicant could still go to Superior Court. So the board, while kind of is a final say, they're not really a final say because they can appeal to the court. So this would actually be taking one appeal away from any applicants, and it would also be taking away the only political appeal of applicants. All the other appeals would be from a legal recourse. And I think that in a civil society, there needs to be opportunities for political opportunity, or political solutions as well as legal solutions, and maybe commissioners don't want to take on that responsibility because they don't want to have to tell people no. Or maybe they don't want to have to say, I gave a guy in my district something that he wanted and get beat up for it. But I think that, um, I think that the public, we would be better served with having more appeals processes available to them and more kinds of appeals processes available to them, both political and legal.
Yeah, I'm fine with the idea of making a clear, uh, uh, making it clear that the Superior Court can step in at that, at the end of that process. But I agree with Commissioner Casino on this, the the key difference is that the reasons for rejecting something, um, from a political stance are going to be very different from the reasons selected from a legal stance. The Superior Court's largely stuck with specifically limited to just, uh, does this, uh, apply with existing law rather than does this fit the vision that, uh, that we've set forth? So, that's my concern there.
I also think about the the burden that, you know, if you go to the Board of County Commissioners, that's something you can do on your own. But an appeal to Superior Court is a whole, that's a whole phase jump.
Let's find financially burdensome too.
Exactly, that's what I'm thinking about, like the resources that it takes to do that. And, I mean, wouldn't a wouldn't a solution to this be, like if a county commissioner wants to talk to an applicant about a process, they would just recuse themselves in the final decision process, like they would be conflicted out of the final decision-making process. And I think that might, I mean, that's a definitely a catch-22 for the applicant, but it feels to me like it might not even be the, I don't want to be the the bad guy or the heavy hand in the uh, situation, but maybe it is even the, those county commissioners feel like their constituents really value that ability to talk to an elected official. And that's what they feel like they're missing, is that connection. Um, it'd be as much that as like, I don't want to make a decision that's gonna hurt someone, so. But, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess that would be the direction that I would prefer, is that we instead work on formalizing a process by which someone can be sort of designated to refuse themselves to be the representative to be spoken to. Um, and make that more of the the focus on this, because I, I, uh, I, I, yeah, I I just, I'm not comfortable with this.
I guess part of the thing that I see there is, is that concern seems to be like an ex parte concern. You don't want an applicant ordering a commissioner in the back room to try to weasel his way and get something that he probably shouldn't have. And I I would absolutely agree with that portion of it, but the other side of that is, staff always, staff is the people or the, or the hearing examiner below them, or whoever made the decisions below the Board of County Commissioners had the ear of the other side the whole time too. And so just from a fairness standpoint, if the side that's saying no has full access to the commissioner and the applicant has very limited access to the commissioner because you think that there's an ex parte communication problem, that's not a fair process. So I'm not terribly concerned about that. I I would prefer that it would be done in a work session, that you would offer the applicant a work session to the whole board, so it could be done on record all at one time. But just because an applicant talks to a commissioner, I don't think that that's a reason to throw out his whole project because of some sort of improper ex parte communication, if that makes any sense. I think it makes sense.
Lacey City Council just went through this.
Say it again?
Lacey City Council just went through this dilemma.
I do, I do actually really think that the the issue that you brought up, that is obviously one of the main reasons they brought that up, is really important. Like, we need to make sure that, like, I remember one of my first introductions into local politics was trying to prevent, uh, backdoor or technical city council meetings that were, uh, being done on be, on behalf of developers. So like, having a formal process of rec, of recusal as an alternative to this, I think is a really productive step. Um, yeah.
Just an open on the record meeting, I like that too. I like that.
You don't have to recuse anyone there because it's
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great solution.
Sunlight, that's disinfectant. Still, I think it, I I think it would not do anybody other than the commissioners good to remove the commissioners from the process. I think that they should stay involved in it, but I don't like it when somebody else tells me how to do it.
We're around on this one? Let's do a temperature check. Hey, using our thumbs.
What, what do you?
This is just a
On the possible solution, we're just doing a temperature check or whatever.
Possible solution?
You know, and I feel like
Consensus on no on that.
I feel like this one might have to stay in the package because the board requested it, but. The recommendation from the planning commission for the reasons just mentioned, sounds like are going to be this. And that's okay.
And I think maybe reflecting the unit.
Well, and 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 this will come back through a formal, a formal like work session we will and we will do a little bit more research to understand better. Why they want to remove themselves from the appeal process beyond what we were able to share tonight.
It sounds like some possible solutions came from from us too that might be worth also.
And this came up, I will say, when we only had a three commissioner board and so. Solutions like recusal, it's a little harder to do that when you only have three commissioners and. Applicants will often talk to multiple commissioners, not just the one. In their district, so.
And just to make it clear, when we do bring this forward and have the public hearing, how it will be set up is that each of the topics will have a distinct motion. And so more or less the motion will exist in that you will have the capabilities of tailoring that motion specifically, so it's not going to be a one size fits all motion. That you have to then create findings, you can establish one from there.
Thank you.
Okay, next one.
Next one, the SEPA review timeline. More or less, this has been raised by community members that the SEPA period time, the SEPA time period is too short. And doesn't allow for adequate time to process and consider the proposal and respond. When this was brought forward as a docket item, it was then countered by another group that said it was too long. And so more or less, we have both sides feeling, expressing their opinions on the SEPA review. And part of our solution will be simply to see what we legally can do. And whatever we can do, we will bring forward and it may result in longer, shorter, or no change to SEPA. Depending on what we come up with and so. Fairly straightforward doc, uh, topic, I think.
Sounds a little too fair and balanced, but what is, when you say. Another group came forward saying, no, let's say if there's five thousand people saying yes and one person saying no, that does not equate to. An equal balance, what what's the ratio?
I would say they haven't necessarily spoken directly to us, so in all fairness, we've had Commissioner Mensah be very clear that he's heard from constituents. That SEPA review timelines are too short and they don't allow for, I mean, I think with Betsy, he might have mentioned it. Let's say an individual hears about it, but they really want the force of the like an organization they're a part of to take action. Calling a special meeting that organization to put together, you know, a motion or resolution or whatever that is, it's. It's some, it's a short turnaround.
It's thirty days, right, right now?
It's fourteen days and then seven days for appeal.
That's okay.
So there, so there are those concerns and then we also heard, I don't even think it. I've been trying to think if it was actually part of the docketing process, we've heard from other commissioners that they've. That their constituents have shared the opposite, that the review timelines are too long and they slow down projects, so we just want to make sure that. We're just gonna look at even what the parameters are because a lot of this is laid out in statute. And, you know, like do what we can or at least bring you the viable options for change.
I'll just openly say that I stand with those who say that fourteen days is too short.
I don't get the feeling that the the delays are not that big.
I just, yeah, I I think about the incredibly valuable input that we've had on any given motion, on any given. Solution to issues that we we get just in this meeting and I think that depriving any of these review processes of that larger public input is just. Detrimental to them and detrimental to you guys finding solutions, like it just again seems to be. Two weeks was shocking.
I just wanted to, I I don't, I think I was probably. Maybe maybe Commissioner Pessinger was here at the time, but this this topic had come up before to the planning commission, not as a docket item, but how to. Change SEPA review times or whether we could or we should and we did, at that time, we did hear from quite a few members of the public. And it was considerably more people from the public saying that they would like to extend review times and I want to think that this was when we were talking about. Whether or not we could license aquaculture on the local level during S and P.
Today's my three year anniversary, thanks for noticing.
For some blueberries. And at the time, so there there might have been a dozen people that would like to extend it and there were, I want to think there's two people that came in and said that they wanted. To shorten it and I want to think that the way that this conversation ended was this is set in state law and there's not.
So I think our approach would be to review all aspects, so R C W, WAC and administrative code and just. See what we can do, if we can do anything and then.
Application types may allow for a longer, so it might not be a cart launch extension, it might be.
Some of those were thirty day reviews.
There is when you get into the E I S realm and then determination of significance and so this would be looking at all aspects, so a DNS determination of non-significance. An M D N S and a D S.
And I think we also heard from somebody at Public Works because a SEPA review extension or decrease would actually affect. Things on the municipal level as well because they file quite a few. See the do do quite a bit of SEPA work themselves.
Yeah, I mean, there aren't many projects that don't trigger SEPA. So just in terms of like the impact of these changes. We we will bring those numbers when we bring this forward in terms of like the number of SEPA applications that B D C. Processes.
If we do find that extending it is something that isn't feasible on the law. I wonder if maybe we could have a. SEPA notice period or comment period or something like that so that. Folks have more awareness that this is coming up so that they can have those meetings, can get their stuff together, you know. A tentative version of the information goes out, we can effectively give more notice period without having to change law. That might be the way to go about it. Well, I think that when we circle back to that whole free free submission. Somehow that was a matter of public record, I don't know if you could make that a matter of public record. And that might give the public more notice that somebody is thinking about doing something. I don't know if that's something that you could or would want to do, but maybe consider it.
So one thing we could look at doing is obviously this would be provided to them in some sort of letter format, as you've mentioned. And that could be as simply as you have to provide this to be able to submit an application and that ultimately becomes part of the application and. Part of the record. In addition to the actual application of the pre-submission.
Not to backtrack, but to piggyback on what you said, it, you you were saying. Could it be made disclosable, my understanding is that meeting would be disclosable, yes?
It would sell public, anything if they can submit it is public record.
Yeah, if if something like that is disclosable, then it's a choice on the part of Thurston County government essentially to. Not proactively make that information open, I don't think anything in there is inherently protected from disclosure, would it be?
It wouldn't be protective, it's just a matter of you'd have to search the address to find any sort of pre-application that. Happened on a site and then you'd be able to find all the materials and applications submitted.
Yeah, and the amount of transparency into the permit process is gonna be vastly improved. With the new permit system that should be online this fall, right now it is very, very difficult, it's even difficult for staff who work here to use this. Very, very antiquated permit tracking system.
Really?
And so, yeah, the the new one, there's just so many more capabilities.
Just saying like theoretically, a concern as a citizen group could request all applications received every month, every month. And. It would be available. You know, I imagine if a group did that persistently enough, then. Those would become available more regularly without the need to remake that sort of request.
The, if you look at the application types, which we'll probably be digging into as part of these like annual updates. Certain application types require notification to surrounding property owners, regardless of SEPA, SEPA is an additional permit requirement. There's a lot of notifications that get sent out. And it's just how many, how many, when those get sent out. And if we add new ones to that list.
Here, I'd like to make a motion to request staff on this direction. Or move that we request staff to. Research and recommend all possible options for increasing notification periods.
Second. Discussion on the motions.
I'll just add both legal and creative.
Well, my only concern with, well, the big concern I have there is the legalese of it, if you call it a notice, a notice is a very specific thing. And and I think that that would not be the intent of what you're getting at, I I think what you're trying to get at, maybe I'm wrong, is that. When somebody walks in the front door and says, I want to do some development. That there is something that happens where the public would know that somebody wants to do some development and if you call it notice, that might.
Conflicted with legal noticing requirements.
I'd be happy to consider that a friendly amendment and change it to awareness.
Well, and we can also, I think it it would behoove us to provide a little SEPA primer as well so that you have a full understanding of. Everything that triggers SEPA and those three different types of determinations that get issued. Cause it might be that these can be tailored by the different either project types and or determinations.
Like even, like there could be like a mini SEPA checklist in there and people could get feedback from the county. On whether or not it was likely, you know, this is likely to trigger a D S and you'll need an E I S and that could be something the kind of thing that. Causes that awareness to be made, like. This is something people are likely to want. Okay, we have a motion that is moved and seconded and friendly amended. All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed?
Alright.
That motion passes. So that'll be in the package, so then we've got.
I have a few questions, sorry. Okay. Uh, so I know that staff has become a little sensitive to my bringing up this topic about. D N S and whatnot.
Oh, this will be good.
I I don't intend this as directed towards staff because you've clearly pointed out that you have a track record, especially recently of more and more. Determinations of significance, but you talk about that. And how that's different from so many of the other jurisdictions we see here in the county who regularly issue. Determinations of non-significance or oh, this is a new project that's gonna have a thousand units and displace this amount of forest land and this amount of. Critical habitat and mitigated determination of non-significance if you plant. Five maple trees and put in a bike path. That's to me not really mitigating anything of what they're impacting, how do you approach that and how does that impact what we're dealing with?
For land use, I mean, the the most recent one is Upcastle. I don't know if you want to speak to that, we hadn't gotten to that point on Beaver Creek, I mean, I think based on the initial feedback, we were leaning toward a a D S. A waiting for what their final proposal was. I think we have talked, there's a tool that you can use, which is kind of a. Early notification out to all of the. Scoping knows essentially to get earlier feedback before you issue. A formal determination, so if you think about getting feedback from W D F W, D N R, ecology, so that. You know, us as a county, we're not operating in a vacuum, so we've talked about using that tool. And then based on that feedback, having a a more informed determination. Cause a lot, I mean, regardless of like what we see and looking through our records and all the. Geo data layers and whatnot, I mean, to to Betsy's point again, I'm sorry, I keep highlighting it, Betsy. You know, W F W is probably gonna have more feedback related to habitat. And our tribal partners will have more feedback related to cultural resources and things like that. So, yeah, I mean, I think.
I I will kind of add that our partners have actually in the past couple of years. Really stepped up their overall engagement on these different projects, I do recall from the Upcastle, we heard from. Tribal groups, the state. Local community members and just on the overall impact, which helped lead us in the direction of a D S because of the. Total. Change from what's happening to what would be going on there. It did potentially have a pretty significant impact on the environment and I do recall that I think it's had prime farmland and things like that, so like. There were a lot of triggers that led up to that and I think. Taking a closer look at those is leading to the direction that we're heading.
Related to that, there were questions from the. Public comments about the U G A swap and a lot of those tied into things like. Laws and. Some of the law cited things that seem tied to SEPA to me like no nut loss in rural lands. No nut loss in critical aquifer recharges. Are you able at this point to comment about? Some of those public comments and whether your interpretation of some of those things are similar or you have different views?
Maybe not to that level of detail, what I can say is that. U G A amendments, right now, the policies around those and sort of that burden of proof and criteria under which. We regionally consider those, they live in the countywide planning policies because they affect multiple jurisdictions, it wouldn't just be the county. It would be a city as well. So there has been a request of the Thurston Regional Planning Council, they're they're the organizing body that. Suggests updates to the countywide planning policies based on feedback from jurisdictional partners, they also convene the. This is a lot, this is really technical, but you're our planning commission, Urban Growth Management Subcommittee, which makes formal recommendations to the county and updating those countywide planning policies. All that said, there was a request made last fall to make updates to those to recognize the new swap laws. Swap laws then got changed again, you know, just this past spring. So T R P C is in the process of standing up the U G M Subcommittee so that. They can look at updates to those kind of planning policies without new policies addressing this. New tool that the state made available to us. It's hard, it's hard to establish guidance or policies and just our comprehensive plan.
What is the new name for that now, it's no longer bar holding, it's something else?
Salish Landing.
We, it, they're referring to it as Salish Landing, but ultimately because it was docked as bar bar holdings, that name will live on until the project is complete. We have kind of expanded the naming when we refer to it as bar holding Salish Landing, so that there's both recognition.
And where does that stand with us, is that something that's coming back up for us again?
Yeah, so it it was docketed. We're in the process of doing research and coordinating with our jurisdictional partners, which is the city of Tom Water. We were hoping to have an open house this summer. But the space that we had reserved, we didn't think would have enough capacity given the level of community interest and then as we started looking around, we really wanted to help hold it in Tom Water. By golly, they're redoing all the floors at the high schools and the middle schools and so. Difting our dates and working with Tom Water to figure out a a good time, because they want to make sure that their leadership is available to attend. And then we're also just waiting for T R P C to move forward with their process because we're getting so many questions as as you've heard about what is the policy framework for this? And the countywide planning policies is, you know, where we're looking to guidance, where you're getting feedback from. All of the jurisdictions within Thurston County, including. Our our county commissioners. And then procedurally. That does not come to the planning commission, their recommendation doesn't, it will go straight to the board.
Just to be clear, I used to be a community representative for two terms on T R. Um, just to be clear, I used to be on community representative for two terms on TRPC and it's a quasi governmental agency. It's not a government, it's not. Um, they serve us, we don't serve them.
They serve us. The big us regionally. Um, and so we are looking to them to convene the Subcommittee, and that's why they only make a recommendation. They're not the final decision makers. Um, but the board does take into consideration um their recommendations.
Uh, I appreciate that. And I guess I'm not clear what I'm hearing. Um, I think I'm hearing that there's basically a slight way that uh through that, that there's a by sidestepping of some of these concerns. And um going through their recommendations, going straight to the county commissioners. And so I just simply want to state that I share uh the exact concerns mentioned by Rhonda Larson Kramer and by Tom Crawford and the entire TCAT organization. I think those are very valid uh questions and concerns that we should address.
One, one thing to add to that is we obviously aren't necessarily administering the TRPC and the update to that, but we plan on our holding webpage to have links to the TRPC page that will host this, so that those who are interested in our holdings will be able to use that page as a conduit to that uh more information.
And once we know in that meeting is scheduled, cause there is public comment, we'll be sure to send out an update to interested parties and stakeholders. Um, cause we want to make sure that the feedback that we're hearing the folks in the UGM Subcommittee are also hearing. We've also been sharing that feedback with Tom Water, so they're aware. Um, and yeah, I mean, that, that's just one piece of the puzzle. The rest of it is gonna come before the planning commission.
Well, they're busy deciding about cutting down a tree, so.
They, but the Conplan map amendment and the rezone that, that lives with this body in terms of making recommendations to the board. Um, and it's similar to the Grand Mound project last year. It's like these things kind of move on parallel tracks. Um, but the planning commission will have the recommendation on the Conplan amendment rezone. And just so you know, there's only one other one that we can find that's being processed right now, and it is jurisdiction initiated, so it's, it's quite different than ours. Um, which is applicant initiated. Um, so in terms of like finding parallels or, you know, using it as some kind of
precedence.
Resource or whatnot. It is Pierce County, so we've reached out to them to get more information. But um, we're not aware of any other active applications.
Thank you.
So if there's any other ideas of things we should look at, that will conclude this presentation.
Well, just really, um, circling back to Mr. Pettit's comments. SB fifty-two ninety um is coming into effect at the end of this year, and it really starts to nail down those project review timelines that have been talked about. Um, and so if the planning commission wishes, I know our, the BDC is already working on trying to identify some procedural um improvements to ensure that we can comply with SB fifty-two ninety. Um, they may or may not involve code changes. If they do involve code changes, is that something you all are open to having part of this package?
I would love to see it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright. Thank you very much. That, I think we're ready to move on to session seventeen on Thurston.
So this is revisiting a presentation that was provided. I think in the June fifth meeting, if I remember correctly. Um, and and this was the night that I was like east coast, brain dead. Midnight. And so we were able to touch by the, the key issue um on chapter two land use, but there were just a a lot more that we didn't cover. So we wanted to make sure that we circle back, gave you a proper overview of chapter two and everything that lives in it. Um, and, you know, we'll be able to cover a little bit tonight. There's a lot of holes that are gonna live in chapter two until we finish up all the housing work and the climate work. Um, but you know, for those of you who are new to Conplan work, it's just a good primer on like, what is this chapter and what can we expect? Um, so let's see here. Okay, next page. So the topic is covered in this chapter. It's a big one. We've got population and growth forecasts, and that's where housing is kind of a critical component that's gonna be missing for a while. Um, it also addresses land use, so things like airport, military conflicting land use types, um, and the compatibility of all those different uses. It's also where you're gonna find our land use designation descriptions, acreages for rural areas, um, that's sort of tie in with state law about um resource lands and whatnot. And then uh essential public facilities are also identified in this chapter.
Yeah, that's good to the land use. There it goes.
Okay, next one. Um, so updates that we first see taking place in addition to all of the big housing stuff um is updating the military compatibility section. So Maya on our team has been working with JBLM pulling new information from the Southside Military Community Partnership um and all their new plans, and then reviewing the maps, um, our land use maps with um all of those new documents, military community partnership documents um with the planning department, maybe all of them, just to make sure that we're on the same page.
We have time to build a soft gate.
Uh, what's interesting is that I think they focus a lot more of their work at the north end of the base. And we're like, southern, southern. So I've been chatting with Gary Cooper down in Yelm about that. Um, uh, expand water availability policies. So this is a uh concern that's been raised by our tribal partners. Um, and really trying to figure out, and this is kind of falls more in the implementation plan, but being able to track water availability. Um, and as we forecast housing growth, ensuring that we are gonna have enough of water to supply them with permanent example wells and whatnot. So we've been working specifically with squawks and tried to come up with um to develop methodologies for how we might do that. Um, but at the end of the day, it's really promoting water policy and availability protection practices as we look forward in the future. Um, updating, of course, our rural and uh rural land use acreages and some of those rural designations, and we'll get a little bit more in depth. Um, refreshing goals and policies, and this is obviously an area we should help. Um, and then one lonely, I just looked this up to see what was on this tiny site. Site-specific land use and zoning correction for the Fort Eaton Park, and who here has ever been to Fort Eaton Park? I was wondering, where the heck is that? Commissioner Peszinger, it is in Lacey, come on. It is tiny little site, like, looks like southwest of Lake St. Clair. Um, and it's got the, yeah, anyway, you should look it up, which I know. There you go. The picture of what's on there is not in there, and it's actually kind of interesting. It looks like a historic site. Next slide, please. Um, so still to come in chapter two, population and building forecast, and I just had a meeting today uh with our jurisdictional partners to talk about housing allocations and land capacity analysis, and it went well. But going well means, can you do it again with just these tweaks? You know, we get another version, and so I can't, can't provide any like final, um yeah, any final numbers at this point, um, but hopefully they're forthcoming within the next two weeks. Um, so you've got your housing-related updates, climate-related updates, we're looking at equity and environmental justice updates. We will have a future land use map. It's not gonna look tremendously different than our current map, other than where we might have to address housing deficits. Um, we are working with our geodata folks to correct just zoning and UGA slivers. Um, and this is just aligning like our parcel layer with actually our zoning layer, and so we're founding, finding some corrections there that are needed. Um, and then of course, the military compatibility updates. Next slide. Um, so, yeah.
Uh, I've heard it from others, and you've mentioned it at the end, and a few slides later, the public comments included using five percent instead of twelve percent percent.
Yeah.
Uh, what would that mean to the youth, the staff in the county if they changed that from twelve percent to five percent?
So the interesting thing about those two numbers is that it isn't changes for the county. The county has tremendous capacity. It's changes for the cities.
Yeah.
And even, I mean, I've even asked TRPC, like, let's say the county wanted to take a more active role in achieving that five percent. Because our parcel, of the parcelization of the county, is it like five acres is the predominant parcel size, and it's already happened, and those are legal building lots? There isn't a lot the county could do to really change that number um significantly from twelve percent or five percent. Um, it's really our city partners. So they have to update their zoning and policies to accommodate more housing. And a lot of them, most of them have done it already, like Sustainable Thurston is a ten-year-old document, and you look at what Olympia's, Olympia's done and Lacey's done with middle housing and whatnot. Their zoning accommodates a lot of housing that might not be built at this point, but if you just run the numbers, the accommodation is there. Like in Tom Water doesn't have a max density on most of their major corridors. But things are seeing, still being built for stories.
In terms of that, that capacity, that capacity you've just described is the capacity that cities are currently at. I know that we were discussing with, uh, is my question, saying that as a fact. Uh, I know that when we were talking about five percent uh versus twelve percent, there was a discussion around how that's probably something that is a shift in terms of the cities taking on a little bit more than they already are compared to the rural areas, given rural density preferences. And so just, the capacity that exists for the cities that you're describing is the capacity that they are already agreeing to, or the capacity of increasing because the county's not taking on much.
Uh, it's like planning documents versus like what's going on on the ground. And so I would say a lot of the policy shifts have already been made coming out of their housing action plans, but even the Buildable Lands report that like we use right now, it's based on twenty eighteen data. So there's a little bit of like looking backwards and what is that trend? You know, that twelve percent trend based on that backward look versus looking forward. I'm not saying that twelve percent is down to five percent. I don't think that the full sustainable Thurston vision has been realized. But I do want to give the cities credit for taking a lot of steps toward achieving a sustainable Thurston vision. Um, some of it is, is hard to capture in the numbers, like a lot of the middle housing stuff is brand new. And so we were just talking today with the cities about ADUs and the assumptions around ADUs. If you look backwards, I mean, the twenty eighteen Buildable Lands Report assumed like twenty ADUs per year for Lacey and like none for Yelm. Well, Yelm just completed a development, we're built into it, we're two ADUs per lot. And if that's gonna be the trend, well, those numbers need to be changed significantly. So we just, yeah, it's just a planning based on old numbers doesn't always work as well as you want it to. And so I think we're we're all committed, or the jurisdictional partners in this region are committed to trying to figure out a way to have growth accommodated in urban areas. It's how we get there. The reality is in a rural, in the rural area, the new housing that can be developed according to Commerce Guidance is only in the eighty percent and above category for area median, median income. And most of it, most of the capacity we have here in the county is accommodating housing in the hundred and twenty percent and above because of the cost of land.
Checks my experience. Well, I mean, I guess this is the future question, but that make a lot of the work that we're going to be doing around housing, how do we change that?
I don't know if we can in rural areas, cause we're not allowed to even build the housing types that the state is saying can accommodate those lower income brackets.
So that's part of the question, um, is, is working in rural areas on, on what kind of housing types we can put in, what kind of cluster density we can do. Um, given rural designation, um, what flexibility exists there? I think the other part of this does come into a point that Commissioner Casino made last meeting um about the uh way that the city and the counties, the uh, or the, the cities and the county work together. Um, or uh, or don't, or choose not to. Um, the, the very hands-off uh approach that the county has to the cities is something that, that may be a little bit of an obstacle in this context.
I would say we can't force them to annex.
Or like, uh, yeah, any of the other pro-density options that we, that we as, as, as the county body might want to.
I will, one of the benefits of joint planning though, is, I don't want to use the word force, but we can, like, under joint planning, the cities are required to fully plan for their UGAs, whether they're not realizing the implementation of the, those plans is another thing, but joint planning does say that the cities have to plan for not just their cities, but their UGAs. And with the assumption that those UGAs are annexed and that the facilities are there to annex them within that planning period. Obviously, we see that that is not happening for some of our cities um as quickly as for others, but in coming from King County, that it's not necessarily the same. The cities are not compelled to do that kind of planning for their UGAs.
So you're saying in your experience, uh, there is a little bit more of a, of direct relationship between the cities and the counties here.
Um, oh yeah, jo- joint planning requires it. We, and we are the only county that does it, where it's like we are in lockstep. Um, but, but ultimately the UGAs are envisioned to be part of the city, so that does mean that there is deference given to the city in terms of how they're gonna provide public facilities and services and the zoning that they expect to be able to accommodate.
So back to the five percent question, um. Our sounds like if we feel that we want that, we want the cities to take on more density. Uh, that we should encourage five percent in the rural areas.
So I shared that with our jurisdictional partners. Our board has given staff the directive that that is that is, um county's position, yeah. Um, and the county funded, um essentially a, a land capacity analysis option of looking at sustainable Thurston, um, based on that directive from the board. So the numbers that will be coming to the planning commission, there will be two options. The environmental impact statement that's being done, as was discussed in the last meeting, will also be looking at those two options. Um, so I think of the planning commission and making the recommendation to the board, we'll, we'll have a lot of information to base that on. And you know, at some point in the very near future, you'll have to tell us what numbers get put in the conplan. So these are the two options, which ones do we want to see, or a hybrid of them?
And I think for, maybe for our benefit, maybe even the public's, um we can make that recommendation, and where, where would we expect to see that recommendation hang up? Or not come to, like, if is that gonna be an issue that, you know, we make that recommendation and it doesn't come to fruition because the cities don't agree to it? Is it gonna be that kind of a possibility?
We have to, all the, the numbers for the county, all the numbers in the county have to hang together. So we can't go one direction and have our city partners go in another direction.
And is there a, is there a forum where that happens, or is that a, gonna be a jurisdiction by jurisdiction decisions happening? They're gonna be forced to sit in a room and hash it out in front of the public, and if so, where?
I think those are good questions. I think our hope is that we'll be able to come at a, you know, at a staff level, and one of the reasons, like, TRPC gave us some preliminary information, and we basically said, go back to the drawing board um on a few items, like ADUs being one of them. Um, but that that at least from a staff level, having a coordinated coordinated approach.
Well, if, if the cities, at least the three northern cities over the last ten years have already done everything that or you think is reasonable for them to add capacity, what would be their motivation for fighting off?
And, and they might not. They might not. I mean, a lot of it is going through the exercise, right? Like, there's a lot of unknowns, and then you run numbers, and you're like, okay, this either isn't as bad as I thought it was, or um, wow, this is a surprise. And so, you know, each of our jurisdictional partners are gonna be having those conversations with your own planning commissions and policymakers.
Is this anything that we can influence through countywide planning policies?
The event, we, we will be updating them with the methodology once it's ironed out, but even if The event, we, we will be updating them with the methodology once it's ironed out, but even if. What's so frustrating about this whole thing is that the state issued methodology for counties to use. We used it and then they just updated it. It's like, do we have to do it again? And they made it more complex. So I mean, it's, this is everyone, all the counties that have. Are the ones to go earlier in their periodic update are all wrestling with this, like, what is this thing? And are we hitting the mark and not really wanting to update the countywide planning policies until they get everything accepted by. Commerce is like, is this? We got commerce feedback that anything within zero to fifty percent should need to be considered as a housing type. That should be accommodated in a rural area.
That's, that's good.
And even the fifty to eighty percent, they're like, eh.
Okay.
Um, so we got pretty firm feedback.
Okay.
That's, that's really useful. And I think it does speak to the question of whether or not it's responsible to put. Affordable housing in places that are hard to access.
Yeah, it's a pretty niche that wouldn't be environmentally.
I, I will say that we already have a lot of affordable housing. In the county that is not permitted. Um, and ignoring that as part of this conversation. Like whether it's appropriate or not appropriate under GMA or whatnot, there should be an acknowledgement that it exists right now. And it exists in RVs and cars and sheds.
Do you have any quantification of that?
Other than the Yelm Open House was illuminating because we had a realtor that works primarily in rural areas. And so she was able to, I think. From my perspective, provide the most like on the ground, this is what I'm seeing. Um, that we hadn't heard, um, the staff. But no, there's really no way to quantify it unless we look at just code compliance cases. And so a code compliance case, it seems like a win. Where you're removing RVs, uh, from a piece of property to the people who are living in those RVs. Is a loss, you know, so. I just, I just want to throw that out there and make sure that we talk about it and while respecting. Like the, the choices that people have available to them or where they're currently residing.
Yeah, I, my experience with this is largely through uh underhouse work that I do. And a lot of folks who are living in these uh facilities are, are in the, in these contexts are. Because of them requiring a lot of the resources that other types, other categories of underhouse folks. Do. So my experience with that has suggested that we've seen a surge in folks living in alternative housing. Um, over the past, I would say five to eight years especially. Um, compared to earlier. Uh, I do think that there is important regulation that needs to happen in those. A lot of people end up in extremely exploitative situations. Because of uh essentially undocumented landlords. Um, but I think that the answer to that is, as you were saying, acknowledging that they're there and figuring out ways that we can. Uh, support residents and tenants in those contexts. As we. That's going to be a major part of the answer, whether we want it to be or not. And, and we need to own that.
And, and so we have started conversations with our regional housing council about like. Very specifically code compliance cases and whether there is more service. More social service provisions that we could offer. When we come across these compliance cases, because in terms of quantification, that's really all we've got. They, they don't do counts like they do in cities, uh, you know, we don't, we don't really have that on the ground knowledge. But when it does come to us, is there a way that we can take a more holistic approach, recognizing that these are housing units? Um, even if they're not connected, there are environmental concerns associated with them for sure, but whether we can work on finding. Alternative housing solutions um for folks where you won't have the same kind of environmental concerns.
Yeah, I think that this is a conversation that's unfortunately going to be greatly mitigated by the recent Supreme Court cases around, uh. Around alternatives to land use, um, and where people can be allowed to survive. Um, I, I hope that we, we remain more progressive. Supreme Court in that regard, um, but uh. I, I do think that there is actually an analogy, an, an analogy here to other types of uh code compliance. Especially around uh no supply ordinances or substance, substance use uh in some areas where. There is a lot of options in terms of what you enforce. Terms of code compliance and laws that exist. And whether you are forced, whether we're focusing on, as you said, a more social option. Versus a, a more social, social resources providing option versus a more punitive option. And that might be an analogy that we want to really pursue when it comes to unofficial housing.
I guess I'm a little concerned too. Like, I think that'd be really good to have all this identified, but I would be concerned that if we did make a. A large effort to identify all of those type of housing units in the county, that then. The cities will show up and say, well, you did the work for us. We don't have anything else to do.
No, I think the cities are. They understand.
Maybe I'm a little cynical about this.
My guess would be most of these housing situations are not people's first choice.
They're not what?
They're not people's first choice.
Yeah, yeah.
So at the root of the problem is that there is not affordable housing other than these situations. And that is the root of the problem. And that is because either, you know, we don't have things zoned correctly. Or the development's just not happening at the pace of the density that it needs to. Yeah, it's the interim solution, which is necessary, but it's not the end solution.
So apologize, I, it was supposed to be a light agenda for you. I'm looking at the clock and I'm like, no, you all really don't like light agendas.
So I know that, uh. You feel like we're going to get a lot more information on this topic, but I feel like we have enough information. I'm ready to make a motion to adopt a five percent goal.
Does it make sense?
Can it be a little bit more nuanced? Because even the, even if you look at what was in the last bill of lands report. Um, so six percent that, that TRPC was able to get to. So I, I'm just a little bit nervous that if. We lock into five percent, then we really don't have any room. Like what if ends up being less? What if it ends up being more?
We call it consistent with the sustainable Thurston. Would that be more? Is that going to be updated?
Sustainable Thurston? No. Um, I mean, I think that there are. The goal of. Focusing growth in urban areas in alignment with sustain, with the sustainable Thurston vision, like. And as close to five percent as possible. So I just, when you say five percent, I'm like, well, what happens if? It's rounding up to six or something.
I don't think I want to say six percent, but I am open to nuance of aiming for something in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Something close to five percent.
So we're. We, if we do lock in at five percent or five-ish percent, um. Yeah.
Nothing says locked in like ish.
But if we do. If, 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 if we have a really firm equivocation on five, on five percent, um. What that's essentially saying to staff is this is the direction we want to go research this and, and, and. When we, when we make other accommodations or when we make other recommendations, it'll be in, in light of this. Um, if later down the road, we are running into a lot of roadblocks that five percent hit, like we, that's. That changes the conversation, but uh you have already put the investment into the research for this, this mode. So. I, I understand the reticence, but I think that, I think that I support Kevin, I support Commissioner Peszinger on this. On, on this motion.
That sounded like a second.
Yeah, so that's a second.
Oh, you also have not got clarity whether a friendly amendment has happened or not, or whether we're still on, we're still on a hard five.
Ish friendly, not the six percent.
So the motion is, can you restate the motion?
Yeah.
Because it was a little unclear and I'm sure our note taker would also.
A move that we adopt the sustainable Thurston goal of approximately five percent growth in the rural areas. Approximately, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, and you're going to second that?
Yeah, seconded.
Okay.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, as a maker of the motion, I'll make a quick comment that I feel like. There's a lot of variables in play here, but you've basically told us that whether it's five or twelve, it's not a lot we can do about it, but. Um, when we say five, we're then stating, stating that we're encouraging the cities to. Uh, increase density. And I think we've heard resoundingly over and over from. Almost all public comment has, whether it's been couched in terms like avoid urban sprawl. Whether it's been couched in terms like maintain rural character, whether it's been couched in terms like save our farmland or forest land or critical habitats. All of that equates to the same thing. Uh, and so that's why I'm in favor of this.
I would just tack on that one of the comments I heard earlier that sort of. Uh, echoed some of that and uh really resonated with me was from. Mr. Kramer, when he said that we should build up and not out in the urban areas.
Could you repeat that please?
Build up and not out in our urban areas.
Yes.
It'll, it'll be interesting as the housing element gets updated to see how. How this gets woven in with the recognition that. So you pointed out, it's not hard and fast changes that you'll see on the county's future land use map or. You know, it's like the. Going to be different than it would be for the cities. Like if the cities move forward with the, the same, um, direction. You will, you will actually see changes to their zoning districts and you will see changes probably to their future land use maps. Um, so I just want you to be aware that like. We will obviously take this direction and weave it in, but it will look different than if the cities do the same.
So do I understand correctly that, so what we're saying is. Is it that the county could actually at this point, given like current zoning accommodate a twelve percent?
We can accommodate more than twelve percent.
Twelve percent. But what we need to ensure is that the cities essentially can accommodate. What we leave behind if we set a five percent. So they can't kind of export their responsibility for that housing back to us.
It's, it's, um, it's, it really comes down to the accommodation. Can, do the zoning they have in place accommodate ninety-five percent of future growth? Or can it only accommodate eighty-eight percent of future growths? So we're essentially asking them to. To up their zoning, um.
Better to have the conversation early, well, make the decision early so that they're not building flex space into their. Like, oh, well, the county can probably handle that. It's fine.
We're, we're almost there and kind of take a little.
No, like, make them work harder. They can make it happen.
I've been doing a lot of education. With our jurisdictional partners about why we can't build apartment buildings in rural areas. And. Yeah, and well, because they're focused in cities, right? And so they're like, what? You, like, you can't do this? And I, uh, thanks to some planning directors at our smaller cities for being like, yeah, you can't really build that on a septic system, you know.
Build some rustic campgrounds. That's the only way you're.
But it is, it's difficult to conceptualize like, well, why not? Why can't you just do that? And it's like, ah, we really aren't allowed to under GMA.
You're effectively having to create a second city or a new city.
Yeah, you have to create a new UGA. So Grand Mound as its own UGA and. If there are any changes that are made to future land use maps or zoning districts as a part of the housing update. It's going to be in Grand Mound because they're only UGA. Um, and a lot of other counties have multiple UGAs. Um, that they plan for that may or may not be associated with cities. We only have one in Thurston County. It's called Grand Mound. So, and I, I do know that Grand Mound has a deficit. Um, it does not have enough, uh, zoning to accommodate, um, housing types in lower income brackets. So that'll be coming to you as a, a puzzle that we have to solve other.
So we've got a.
We have a motion that's seconded on the floor.
Are we ready to vote on said motion or are we going to discuss a little bit more?
Thinking about folks who want to live in rural areas who can't afford it. And it's some of the folks that are not well housed now. In, in Lewis County, they're now offering something called rural alternative housing where you can build a cluster. Of homes. They're not on city sewer. They have rules as far as, you know, it has to be a fairly small cluster. It, um, has to have its own septic, its own well. But they're actually letting people do this for that purpose of, I want to be in the country. I want to live in the country. I don't want to live in an RV, but I can't afford anything else. And I'm hoping that, I believe also that we should try to restrict growth in the rural areas, but I also don't want to force people. Who don't want to live in town and don't have a lot of money to go to town. So I'm thinking, how do we do that?
Uh, yeah, this is something that's very much in my interest. It's something I want to have a lot of future conversations about. It's like making these uh clusters, like. Working around our, our, our limits with rural areas to make clustered housing that protects wider, that, that protects meaningful habitat while, while allowing. Uh, and in rural character.
And community.
And community, like, while, while actually fostering greater community in this context. I think, I think there are some really creative solutions. I've, I've. Heard a reference to them by, uh. Ashley Wright, folks, I've heard some folks, uh, in, in, uh, bring comments to, 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 uh. Us about these. I, I think that's a route to go. I. So when we're talking about this five percent, uh, that's something that I have in mind about ways that we achieve the five percent. Because the five percent is still going to take a lot of work.
Right.
I totally agree with this comment. So I think we should. Explicit either.
No, no, I was, I was going to bring up is like, we've established that there is. Unlicensed, low income housing in Thurston County right now that is not people's first choice. And as that opens up in urban centers, we'd likely see some migration out of there, which. Means there's actually more room for a more planned, more licensed. Cluster housing thing that maintains world character, that's respectful watering, doesn't infringe on, and impinge on. Habitat and forest.
So I'd like to have a secondary conversation, maybe that might involve some recommendations and motions come out of this after we're done with this current vote. That takes into a, a, account both of these aspects.
And I think we can do both.
And, and so you know, staff is definitely researching all of the options that have been brought up by the planning commission, whether it relates, I just. Popped on Lewis County's. Thank you. I did not know that they're presenting that through. We actually already have a lot of these standards currently codified. Um, but what we're finding is that they're not being built because they're more costly. Um, for developers. So then we're also going down the rabbit holes of trying to explore ways to incentivize it.
This might also be a nonprofit or a land trust approach.
Could be, which is what they do in Island County or San, sorry, San Juan County.
We don't, we don't necessarily have to make it more appealing to developers. We just have to make it more accessible to people to be living there.
Yes. Ding ding ding.
No, that is true. There's.
If I feel like it's, if it's more resident initiated than developer initiated, it's going to fit the spirit of that law regardless.
I think Lewis County is trying to build in some ease of permitting there too. Like if your. Those guidelines, you can, you can, you can do it. You don't have to jump through so many hoops.
And some of the things we talked about as Thurston County land trusts, uh, really expands, um, their portfolio. Um, similar to what San Juan County does, um, they've got density bonuses and things like that. If it's affordable housing, there's like a, a partner there. Um, and. We, yeah, anyway, so we're, we're in conversations with San Juan County, um, and any other creative. Ideas that you're aware of. Also taking a close look at, um, our lammers. Um, to see what kind of capacity still exists there. Our lammers aren't, have nearly as many as other, um. Jurisdictions, but where we do have them trying to be creative.
Right, let's, let's get ourselves back to our motion. You want your voice? Call roll.
Commissioner Bumberger.
Aye.
Commissioner Fishburne.
Aye.
Fisher Kaiser.
Aye.
Mr. Bartlett.
Aye.
Commissioner Casino.
Aye.
Commissioner Pestinger.
Aye.
Chair Day.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Five-ish percent it is.
Approximately five percent, I believe is the official language used.
So I'll try to get through the rest of these slides really quickly. Just want to make sure we, like. Do this because Maya will be really upset with me if I don't get through this. She's presentation she put together. Um, just a few. Updates we realized in looking through chapter two that it didn't include descriptions of land use designations for Nisqually agriculture or our rural resource. One to five, um, residential designation. Um, also updating neighborhood convenience commercial citing criteria for those commissioners that were here last year. Um, when we did a site specific rezone and neighborhood convenience commercial, we realized it was very limiting, well, both confusing and limiting. Um, depending on the way it was interpreted and so. Um, depending on the way it was interpreted, and so this will hopefully clarify. Um, what a neighborhood commerce, convenience, commercial um, sort of district looks like, um.
Are you getting rid of the size restrictions?
Yeah, well, proposing to, it'll be up to you, um, but yeah, that to. Make it reflect what's on the ground more accurately. Um, and then we did already discuss the rural resource industrial purpose. Uh, the purpose of that um, land use second designation and we got clear feedback um, on that, so we appreciate that. Um, so this is just a snapshot of the land use acreages as they exist today, yeah.
It's massive, it's incredible. Um, can you describe what that means designated resource uses forty percent? With mineral land seventy-six percent as it relates to all those other categories.
So the mineral resource is the reason that those numbers differ so vastly is it's an overweight. Um, rather than its own distinct zone. Whereas the like long-term agriculture districts and long-term forestry. Land use designation exists as their own zone in map designation.
So you're saying that those designated resource uses which can include how, include how many categories?
Well, it's your forestry, your agriculture and your mining. And with the mineral resource update that's fairly recent, I think at least Chair Casino, you were here for that.
Yeah, can we co-designate too?
It's co-designate essentially, but it doesn't, it doesn't show up on this map as like a separate like. Long-term mining designation, um. Think of it more like an overlay or is.
So there's, there's some overlap.
There's overlap.
So something like state forest is going to be in that category?
They're like, I can't read that tiny map. I forget exactly which designation is. Um, yeah, long-term forestry.
So that equals forty percent of all the acreage in the county.
That plus the long-term ag. In the squally bag.
Yeah, it looks like we're mostly split between that and rural residential.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything else being essentially marginal, and if we're looking at habitat corridors and climate mitigation later on, those are going to be the big areas that we're going to be looking at.
So then you're saying basically that some significant portion of rural one to fives has got mineral land overlay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, rural one to five, as you see, it's the biggest. The biggest land use and that really reflects. Legacy parcelization. Like most of that is already a five acres or less, it's not like. There aren't. As many parcels um, that are larger that can be broken into those five acres. Excellent, please. This is the fourteen zoning correction, but so when I first looked at this map, I'm like, it must be the red thing, right? No, it's.
Oh, my goodness.
It's very small.
It's really small. So this is just a small zoning correction to recognize it's a public park.
Monument.
Yeah, this is down off of Yellam Highway.
I'm sorry, I don't want to spend too much time, but what is the other square?
Evergreen Valley Grocery.
Yeah.
EVG. Yeah, it is, so uh, zooming in, it is right here. It's real tiny, it's, yeah, it's, and it's kind of in, it's not in a super notable location, let's say. It's near a pet care center.
If you, if you'd like, you can go out, visit it, take pictures. Yep, so this is the one that we did discuss um, in June. Um, and then just to wrap up and reiterate a lot of the comments that you've already heard, um. As it relates to the um, rural resource industrial, obviously concerns about proliferation of warehouses. Um, we've heard comments about the tensions and competing land uses, how do we provide for housing while also protecting. Our resource lands um, and habitat and our environmentally sensitive areas. Um, what's the best way to integrate climate with land use policies? I think a lot of that is the build up instead of out. That we've also heard tonight, um. Obviously, uh, implementation and collaboration with jurisdictions and tribes, of course, as we talk about housing. Um, there's definitely a lot of collaboration that's going on with our partner jurisdictions. And then with the tribes really trying to develop, like I said, those methodologies for water available. We had already discussed clarifying language for the rural resource special designation and. The use of sustainable person. So stakeholder engagement, these are the folks that we reach out to specifically on land use. Um, so our local tribes are still meeting monthly with them and then having individual meetings, um. Um, uh, as requested to go over specific chapters or concerns or issues. Um, we've also had outreach with JBLM, uh, with our internal uh, water resources. Staff both within our whole division as well as with public health. Um, and public works, and then of course TRPC as it relates to all the housing. You already touched on this, but as chapters are coming your way from here on out, I'm trying to respond to all the. The concerns um, and direction we've heard from the planning commission about. Um, having our policies be actionable statements, eliminating should, shall, may, will. Um, especially where they create confusion and um, having the implementation plan. Um, specify who, how, when and where these things are going to take place.
For the record, I, I don't think there was any negative feelings toward will. It was the first three in that group that we had the issues with. Is the softer words, not the like, strong definite ones.
Yeah.
And then, hey, up there it's still climate for July seventeenth, so we're on track.
Well done.
Yeah, except for we didn't make it in the whole short meeting thing, so.
I mean.
Not because.
I just wanted to acknowledge that I had said earlier that like we should have a conversation about like uh. Clustered housing and these alternatives, I'm not saying that we should have that right now, um, in the spirit of trying to. Uh, but I would like to formally set a little bit of time aside in a future meeting to, to, to work on that.
Is that, we'll spend some time now, is that something that we could build into it? I don't think we would have the, I'm not sure if we'd have the time to give it. Sorry, I was just going to ask if that would be the kind of thing that we could uh, fit into future agenda item, give ourselves some space. To talk about some of those, you know, is it, would it just be policy language probably, or think about it in a con-plan context?
We can verify with the consultants in terms of when they'll have some other research done, but we specifically sent them. A whole list of things to research based on the housing. Housing work session that we had last time with the planning commission.
Personally rather have that conversation once we have that information.
Yeah.
So it's more informed than just us kind of spitballing with the policy in front of us.
Yeah, we've asked them to do like, can you look into other jurisdictions, can you verify what's allowed under state law and case law? And so if, if it's okay with um, us verifying when we think we'll have that and could make it available. So that you have adequate time to look at it and have that conversation um, before we commit to a specific date.
Could we commit till like in the next two months during that?
Oh, yeah, 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 I mean, we have the next housing discussion in August.
I think.
Already.
We should have something more substantial in August.
Yeah, yeah, I would like to have a, a space to decide for this during our housing conversation in August. I also have an additional uh, item, which is just if we want to have a conversation around uh, the corridor discussion that we had before. Um, I would like to have some time to have uh, in, 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 you know, relevant upcoming meetings.
Your climate coming up, I think that makes sense, right?
Yeah, we could talk about it.
Yeah, next week. That would be my preferable place.
It makes sense there.
I also had a related question, uh, this is about our last meeting and there was a commissioner who's not here today. Who made a comment when we talked about uh, listing the causes for. High cost of housing and inaccessibility of housing. And I, I don't, you know, I don't want to question them while they're not here, but there were people here kind of thought the comment was amusing when they said. That number one cost factor to housing is GMA. And I'm curious from those that are here, uh, who thought that was, you know, had some logic or made some interesting commentary. I don't understand what that means, um, that the GMA is a barrier to the high cost of. To, is part of the high cost of housing here, other than to say. Things that we do zoning wise, um, and habitat. You know, conservation and other farmland preservation and other types of things. Cause and, and probably also the just nature of the permitting process uh, causes. Expenses to go up for builders and developers of, of housing, um. I don't. Maybe that's something we have to do, I mean, we wouldn't be a planning commission if we weren't doing GMA stuff, like what's the point? If we're not planning and trying to say, let's build here and not there, let's not build on forest land, let's not build on forest land, let's not build on critical habitats. Et cetera, let's protect our water, I mean, if we're not doing those things, they may cause some increase to the price of housing, but. If we're not doing those things, then we might as well just not be planning at all. So I'm just, I'm a little confused and curious if anyone here can share insight on. How GMA could be an impact to the house, the housing costs and accessibility?
I mean, free for all would be cheaper.
What?
Free for all would be cheaper.
Yeah. Unplanned, unmanaged growth is cheaper in the short term. If you ignore a lot of the long-term costs.
I, I think the, the GMA is, is designed to balance all of these different values that we have as a society. And that's, I mean, when you balance those, some of those values, there are going to be, you know, costs that shift. Um, and really, it's probably, we're trying to keep a lot of, you know, things that socially are important. And it does put a lot of restrictions on what people can do, and that essentially will make it harder or more expensive. What we signed up for.
Everything's a trade-off and it costs is one of them.
I, yeah, I do think that that it's worth acknowledging that. The, the, the accurate aspect of that, which is that this is like, when, when you give someone one of those prices, they just, or one of those additional costs. They will just uh, increase their overall price at the end, uh, for the, the people that we are trying to uh, service with. Housing or with, with a tendency of various sorts, uh, and so. Our, part of our job is recognizing that uh, when we are creating. Costs that are going to be passed down to the consumer, finding ways to mitigate the degree to which those costs are passed on to the consumer. Um, I think is one of, one of the, 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 the realizations there of like, yes, these are right, like these regulations just need to be happening. Like the, the, this is just like the job of us, is this kind of oversight? And perhaps an additional aspect of our oversight is the ability to uh. Use our oversight as a profit generating mechanism.
I will just add that for, for what's worth, I'm currently like reading a book from the library called Capital City. And it uh, talks about the fact that. Uh, real estate and housing is sixty-five percent of the world's wealth assets of the entire world. It's more than ten times the amount of all the gold that's ever been mined in the history of the world, um, it is the asset.
It's the one that generates most wealth for most of the people.
Most generational wealth too.
Yeah, accessible and able to be held out, it makes a big difference to versus. The thing that we all complain about, which is the um, accumulation of wealth by a select few.
I think this is wealth versus uh, money, this is uh, wealth versus resources that can be uh, circulated through economics.
Alright. We have, I'm going to move us on, I assume we don't have a general Thurston County update, Harold Thurston, twenty twenty.
Nope, other than although he's not here tonight, Commissioner Halverson was kind enough to join Miriam um, at an event. I remember it was last week and the weekend before, but appreciate that and any, any of you that want to join for future events. Have a pretty full calendar this summer.
Thank you, um, staff updates?
Um, I have one update, the LRA uh, code amendment is scheduled for August seventh. Around ten AMish, they're scheduled a little.
A work session?
Okay. For one hour, um, we don't know the exact time because it kind of is fluid uh, during their periods, but. If the planning commission wished to produce some sort of uh, concise comment to provide, we will be happy to bring that forward to them. Uh, at that meeting.
I believe the discussion was, we wanted to see what staff intended to present before we did that.
That was in our minutes.
We are working, we almost have a draft that is shareable, um, and. Waiting on, you know, review by prosecuting attorney's office and things like that. Um, but it's, it's going to be a more standard like documentation of a, a neutral documentation. Um, so if, I would say if the planning commission does want to provide something. It would be who view to start working on it, knowing that ours is going to be more of a documentation of process and what was heard and dates. Um, rather than trying to reflect all of the intention, I think, behind the motions that were made.
But it will include our motions.
Oh, yeah, no, it'll, it'll definitely include the motions and for those of you who have been on the planning commission, you're more familiar with like our staff reports are. They're process oriented.
You said it's in a draft state right now, is it shareable in its draft state or is it not?
So, I think.
Rough, rough draft.
And I think I'm hearing is we might be better off if, so if. The, if it's really a process documentation from your standpoint, like motions and process, um, that intention piece.
The intention piece is really yours.
And we know what motions we made.
Yes, and why, I think it's the why, like we can document that this was made, but I know there was so much thought and conversation that.
Those aren't captured in findings?
We captured the findings in more high level descriptions, but we didn't go into hyper-specific like from a. Individual commissioner perspective.
Which is why I think having it in draft would still be helpful, as we can say, finding X, here is our elaboration. During the weed stuff versus us trying to completely synthesize that from nothing.
It's just that we only had our next meeting next week between now and August seventh.
So, so the findings are done, they were in the recommendation letter that were, that was signed.
And they were very high level, they were not hyper-specific uh, on purpose because we didn't want to. Pull from one individual person, but we wanted to capture the overall sentiment on each of the specific topics. And so that is complete and then the, as Ashley mentioned, it's very process oriented, it is broken that. Uh, it's still very rough, so uh, by date and kind of the general conversations that were had, but not as she mentioned. The intent of the conversation and the overall feeling.
So it sounds like the findings are shareable now?
They are in the recommendation letter.
Is that, I mean, that, that can be made available to the whole planning commission?
So if we, if we think we have what we, I think, need essentially to make our intention known. Um, how do we want to do it? Is this a subcommittee, is this somebody's going to volunteer to go through the. Findings and take a crack at the intention, and then do we, uh, from a process standpoint, would we want to bring that back to the. Planning commission as a whole before we send it to the board before August seventh?
Yes.
Hey, so that's going to be some work.
Yes.
Sounds like we're signing up for, um, subcommittee or volun- volunteers tribute.
I think that this is something that requires more than one person to look at.
We have more than one volunteer to look at it.
I'm willing to be a volunteer, I'm not willing to sign up as tribute.
Do we have anybody else who'd be willing to, I think we're talking about a subcommittee now?
The Commissioner Casino did a significant amount of research and a significant amount of the presentation of arguments on that, and it would be. To our detriment if he was not a member of that. Some opinions on this that I will want to express towards the board, I'm not sure the very best format to do that, if that's through a subcommittee. Findings report or something like that, um. So it's hard for me.
That could be the recommendation of your subcommittee.
I, I, so, so I know, to your point, Commissioner Casino, I know that you have been very active in the past in attending the board work sessions. And sharing it that way. and sharing it that way.
On my calendar now too, so I imagine that I'm going to be there.
Yeah, and usually when planning commissioners are there, like, so the, for all of you who are new, who are to the planning commission, usually we invite chair, vice chair, like they're just part of the presentation. However, any planning commissioners show up, the board accounting commissioners usually also invite them um to provide feedback, especially if the chair um Commissioner Day says, and for the other planning commissioners that are here, would you like to say anything? It is impactful, especially for a board that may not have time to read everything.
So is, is your, essentially your thought that we might be better off with testimony at the work session than a letter? And we might wanna just rally to provide cogent testimony?
Better or in addition to?
Okay.
Uh, do you know if you are going to attend since it's in the middle of the workday?
Yeah, and, and like to Andrew's point, the way they do work sessions now with the board is that they block off ten to noon and then they have two topics. This is the second topic, which means you really don't know when it's gonna start. So it could start at ten fifteen if the first topic goes fast. It could start at eleven fifteen if the first topic goes slow. So unfortunately for you all, it's probably blocking off ten to noon rather than like eleven to noon, if you wanna make sure that you're there for the first part of it.
And the only other thing I would throw out is we in the past have been, the planning commission has been allowed to speak, but obviously there is it could change. They may not necessarily do that. Like, I'm just kinda throwing that out there.
We should not count on that. Yeah, you're, you're stating uh what it's been a trend. You're not uh making a, a strategic recommendation to us.
The board ultimately gets to decide. And we have new county management. Um, I will say in the past though, um with work sessions, we have definitely had the planning commission chair invited to sit right at the table um and give is almost a co-presentation um on, on a topic where the planning commission really wanted to be presented.
I may bring this up again in our next week meeting, but I, one of our largest concerns about writing the letters, we wanted it to be in direct response and supplement to your final report. And we were quite clear that we wanted those materials in advance. I know some of the stuff that we're waiting on legal opinions for, the, the parts we're going to want to engage with the most because this body did not agree with the earlier opinions and that. And I think it's disadvantageous to us to write a letter not knowing what that recommendation is. So it feels like, oh, I can, the commissioners can just disregard this section because legal says this, like. So I, I do intend to bring it up again next meeting. Um, and I may be uh prepared to motion to produce the draft, the rough draft in whatever form it is in at that point, if we haven't made significant progress.
Just for reference, the quote is on page three of our notes, lines three, four and five.
And we're trying a lot that we're working on at the same time. So we have produced a rough draft, but we do have internal review of things, especially when it's something going to our board. We don't have full control of what those review protocols are. And so we're trying to respect board's direction, board's office direction and the preparation of those materials as well as the requests of planning.
We do understand that you are in a difficult situation, both in terms of workload and in terms of the conversations that you have to balance here. Um, and we, we appreciate the work that you've been putting into this and your balancing act here has been very deft. Uh, we do have some pretty significant concerns that we wanna make sure that we get across as, as uh eloquently and concisely as possible. Um, so I do think that that's gonna have to require a little bit of setting some time aside. It could be after next meeting. I'm not married to doing it this week. It's been very busy for me.
I don't think there's anything in there that is going to be different than the presentations that we gave. So I know that you wanted to supplement Commissioner Bombarter, but I think it's.
Alright, so in particular, the naming thing, we changed the naming because we were told that legal said that that was misleading. And that's the main thing that I'm interested to see their reconsideration of that.
And whether or not we need to rebut it.
Yes, whether or not we need to rebut it. I feel like that's important. I think that's one of the lowest hanging fruit in this, and I feel like it will get bulldozed if there's a legal opinion says, oh, that's still not good enough. So I'm very interested in seeing that before we go to this, this hearing.
Sure, legal's.
Work session, sorry.
But.
So your work session materials are not fully prepared yet. Our recommendations and findings you've done and turned in, but your work session materials are not done. Do you expect to have those done before next week?
Andrew.
Hoping. So we have multiple things going on at the exact same time. And so, and they're shifting the schedules of when materials have to have an initial draft available to the uh management. And so it's, it's putting us in a very precarious.
This management, take your reports, write another report and then give that to the VOCC?
No. They just, they review it for content.
And might provide edits and feedback.
Okay.
This is the, just so you're all aware, this is like one, this is the first planning commission recommendation that we're bringing to the board with new management. Um, and plus the full commission. I mean, we had the, the comp plan stuff at the end of last year. Um, but yeah, this is a lot of, a lot of change in the board's office since then. And so we're trying to navigate all of that.
It sounds like a good time for us to be establishing ourselves and our relationship with that new management and this new procedure.
And I would also say, Commissioner Bombarter, writing a full staff report and making it available to the planning commission is something we've never done before. So being on a, the planning commission's timeline versus the board's timeline, like we're getting pressured to move this as quickly as possible through the board. And at the same time, the planning commission wants space and time to review it. And there's definitely conflict there in our timelines.
We understand. We really do.
Yeah, and I think we're just trying to like etch your process, not like slow it down.
Yeah, that's exactly, exactly. We want, like, our interest in this is not to force you to make a lower quality document because we want access to it or to make you work on this in, in priority of other things. It's just letting us know when we can have that information to Ben.
We will hope to have a draft ahead of July seventeenth. It might be on July seventeenth, though. It's a, it's, when it's available, we'll be sure to send it. We won't wait because it falls outside the normal timeline that we send materials out.
That's, that's all we ask.
So do we need to make any decision here tonight? It sounds like we might not.
No, I think we can make a decision next meeting. And Chair, I don't know if you were able to look at your calendar, if it's too far out for you to decide, but i- if you're not able to make it, you are allowed to make a designate, a designate go to. And.
And he's volunteering.
I think that uh Commissioner Casino is willing to make.
We'll talk about that on the seventeen probably. Great. How we wanna represent our opinions at the meeting.
So I feel like if, even if we make a letter off of a draft, we can state this is based off a draft. It's the best information we had at the time, but in the interest of getting this out, this is what we've.
At a minimum, we have to have things done at least two weeks in advance of August seventh. At a minimum, which would give the planning commission time to make changes to a letter that they're hoping to provide.
That's a reasonable timeline for me. I don't know how others feel, but like that's, that's what we're, that's what we're working with.
As a bureaucrat, two weeks sounds like no time.
Yeah.
It is actual. Right.
Yeah, it's, it's all of CBA review.
Okay, so.
One CBA review, please.
So we've, we've had some discussion here about the, so that was our staff update. Is there anything else on the staff update side?
Interviews today for the education outreach specialist position in our group and hoping that they go well. And within the next few weeks, we'll be able to make an offer to someone and we will be fully signed.
Nice. Awesome. We got good candidates?
Seventy-nine applications. And like amazing candidate. It's kind of like first tier, second tier, third tier. So, yeah, I mean, it was, it was astounding.
Congratulations.
So we are, yeah. People wanna work with Miriam, so that's awesome.
That's a good sign. All right. Um, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to calendaring and agenda items, I feel like we've actually discussed quite a bit of this now. So the seventeenth, um, sense of uh attendance, is there anybody who's gonna miss that meeting?
Okay.
No.
All right. And then um we've got the August seventh meeting as well.
That may be problematic for me, depending on when I'm dropping my mother off at the airport. So, okay, yeah. All right, so I'd be fun to bring her along to the work session meeting. We can sit together and hey, I haven't seen you in person in two years. Let's go sit and watch the commissioners talk.
Yeah, my time of absence actually fits really neatly in between our, our August meetings. So that's great.
Mine does as well.
Some pursuit?
No. Well. Maybe, yeah. At least light pollution in the state.
Recommendation letter, just for your knowledge, um Tasha just notified me that it is posted online under the June twenty-sixth meeting. We can also send out a, a copy if that'd be easier, but.
I think it would be still helpful to send it out. That would be much appreciated. All right, so moving on, do we have anything for the good of the order before we adjourn? It's a little bit out, but Rainier Roundup Days is the fourth weekend of August. That's an opportunity for.
It's on our calendar.
Good.
Tomorrow week. But if any of you are gonna be there and wanna help us.
I will, I will probably find time to go down and see what's going on. We can pick up the bluegrass vessel.
We'll ask someone after this, what's bringing your roundup this.
All right, uh, anything else for the good of the order?
Having no other business, this meeting is adjourned.
They are.
So it was possible, so good.
Three hours.
Yeah, under three hours.